Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Let loose here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. And go for the goal. Here, a treasured history meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
Member Wolf, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes, additions, or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, I'd make the motion to remove item nine B resignation and six, the Duke Energy Presentation from the Agenda, and to add item five, Presentation of Resolution Honoring Nancy Avery, interim clerk. And then, any discussion for that?
I'll smack a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I do have some changes to the minutes. That are under the consent agenda, approving the minutes. I noticed in the January 16th minutes, it says council, for the roll call, it says council member Ray Bourne, rather than council member Ray Bourne dash present. It just lists her name. It doesn't say that she was actually present. And then in the budget, the budget retreat minutes, it's on page 12. At the end is said, where it says manager Johnson said, it says, it is not a moneymaker and there are no, and there are health department regulations. And I would just ask that we add if we do free food that is not prepackaged, there are health department regulations. And then on page 15, it's page five of the minutes, but page 15 of the packet. It says, are we doing anything for the upcoming 50th anniversary of the town instead of the golf course? I was thinking the town was maybe a little older than 50 years old.
Nancy, do you have those changes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have approval of the consent agenda with those changes to the minutes?
I move. Sorry, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Nancy, do we have anyone signed up for the public comment here?
No.
Thank you. And Carrie Miller, if you would join Sarah Glanville, she will read your proclamation for you.
We're going to stand up here today, Carrie. And I'm rest assured this mic will pick me up, but well, I don't want to be the mic, so. Whereas serving the town of Jamestown as an alternate on the planning board is an act of dedication to patients. And whereas an alternate spends time waiting in the wings to step up and functions as a voting member in the absence of a regular member while also attending meetings to keep up to date on items appearing before the board. And whereas citizens that volunteer for an alternate position make the great commitment, knowing the importance of the position, is to attend all meetings in the event their presence is needed. And whereas Carrie Miller served the town diligently and faithfully on the planning board from 2006 until recently. Now therefore, being resolved, I, Sarah Glanville, on behalf of the mayor and the town council, do hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Carrie Miller for his valuable service and dedication to the citizens of our community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the official minutes of the town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to the service of Carrie Miller, adopted this 13th day of February 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And Nancy, if you'll join me, we have a resolution for you also. You can come here if you want to. Whereas the town of Jamestown has been exceedingly lucky to have the opportunity to work with Nancy for a second time. And whereas she has years of experience working for various local governments across the state. And whereas she has a unique ability to seamlessly fit into a new group of coworkers and has the knowledge and work ethic to assist with successfully accomplishing key goals in a short period of time. Whereas Nancy has agreed to serve in her interim position with very short notice and everyone that had worked with her in the past was very delighted. And whereas she took her responsibility to maintain the clerk's reputation of staying hydrated and caffeinated at all times very seriously. And whereas she has agreed to come back to work for the town if needed, as long as it is as long as it is in a warmer month. And whereas Nancy has been a pleasure to work with and will be greatly missed by all the town staff and council. Now therefore, I, Lynn Montgomery, on behalf of the council and our citizens, do hereby recognize and express our deep appreciation to Nancy for the dedication of her time and talents to our community and convey our best wishes. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Sarah Bolins, would you like to present your 5K race for the PTA?
I wonder if I should talk into the mic or a little short. So hi, everybody. My name is Ira Bolins and I'm here on behalf of Jamestown Elementary School. I am the PTA president this year, as I was last year. And I just wanted to come here and kind of present our 5K race to you all. It's something that we put on last year and it was so successful that we really would like to do it again. We raised close to $10,000 in fundraising profit, which is way more than we've ever done with anything else that we've ever done before. And one of the reasons why we would like to do this is we want to get away from the idea that fundraising is kids selling items, selling products. Because while they may be somewhat profitable, they're not memorable. And so last year when we had the 5K and we were able to have parents come out with their children and they're running the 5K and their siblings are running the 5K and grandpa and grandma are out here and they're cheering them on. It's just something that's so much fun for all of us and it did so well that we would love to do it again. I did have a flyer, which I don't know if I need to pass it around. Because we have the 5K, which is presented to anybody. You can go onto the website and it's $25 per individual and you get a t-shirt along with getting a chance to run the race. And then we do have a fun run option, which is free to our students. But then they can obtain monetary donations from whoever they would like of their choosing. And depending on how much they get in donations, they are allowed to get their face painted or get into the bounce house for free, et cetera.
Any questions, counsel?
Well, is this the same route that y'all did last year?
Yes, the same route.
The streets, yeah. Now, I think it's wonderful. Man, you did great as far as the amount of money you raised. I just, my only thing was the, the safety of the kids on the roads. It looks like you're using volunteers, but if you did that last year and it was successful.
We have a lot of parent volunteers and student teacher volunteers. So we had two at each intersection vested to make sure everybody was, was safe along the route. And we also send out a, a letter to the residents along the route to make sure everybody's aware that this is happening. So there's no confusion as to why we have all these people on the street.
Yeah. And I guess good to let the sheriff's department know that day. Of course, you have someone here that, you're making note of that date. So all these kids are doing in town.
If you want to see the letter to the residents.
I think that's in the packet.
Yeah.
Sounds very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended last year and I have done many, many races, many a fun run all the way up to marathons. One marathon. I shouldn't say marathons. And for, especially it being a first year race, it was incredibly well run. It is very hard to put on a race and, and I was very impressed by how well it was, it was.
Thank you.
In general, let alone the fact that it was the very first year, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the course is very difficult. It is very hilly.
You're not supposed to say that, Paul.
Oh, the course is the easiest course I've ever gone. That hill up Forest Hill is not problematic at all.
Well, you can do the fun run this time. The bounce house. I was there too. It was fantastic. So certainly, you know, I think you're, you've already used a great formula and are just going to be doing it again, so.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the JSPTA 5K race on April 27th, 2024.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. I hope you have good weather.
I know it was rainy last year.
Oh. Chief Carson. Give us your presentation.
Good, good to go. All right. Well, good evening, mayor and council. My name's Derek Carson, Fire Chief, Pine Cross Sedgfield Fire Department. And I come to you tonight to present the 2023 annual report. And so I've got a few slides we'll run through tonight to kind of, to show you that report. One of the highlights from 2023, on a five-year rotation, fire departments were re-inspected as far as part of the ISO. And so we were re-inspected in 2023 and retained our ISO Level Two in, in Jamestown. So that's something exciting for us to, to be able to retain for the town of Jamestown and what that means to the commercial and the, and the residential property owners in, in Jamestown. So for some of the newer council members, just kind of an update of what we have over at Station 46 next door. In the, in the meetings and throughout the year. So anything that we can do as a department, we're glad to do any requests or specifics that you have. Reach out and we'll, we'll try to do our best to, to help any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
That response time is awesome. That's awesome. The medical calls, do you still get a lot of medical calls at Shannon Gray?
No, that, that number has come down significantly. So in the past, we've shown data with a large call volume being over there at Shannon Gray. Since COVID, some things were put into place countywide. That helped to limit some of that. And so we've continued on that. That's a initiative that we kept after COVID. You know, some good things have come in the last couple of years and that was one of them, was to see the need versus the, the response. And so we saw that we were able to cut back in some areas that didn't truly need the, the response that we were given. So yeah, that, that number has declined significantly.
Okay. Oh, good. Well, thank you for your hard work and dedication and keeping us safe.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
I will say that I did attend your, the main good and awards ceremony. It was really well done, so thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
The amount of awards that were given out was really impressive. So that kind of demonstrates just how many volunteers we do have. I'm certain we do have room for more, but that was well done.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Cox, would you give us the sheriff's report?
Good evening. Under the understanding, everybody has a copy. It should be two stat sheets that you should have in your paperwork. Just making sure we're all on the same page. So I know I'm a new face, so I introduce myself. I'm Lieutenant Cox. I was recently assigned out to District Three. I was in Internal Affairs before that. So I actually started in Jamestown, training and everything way back in 2009. So I'm glad to be back. It seems like some things have changed, but some things seem the same. So I'm just enjoying kind of learning everything and getting back in the swing of District Three. So if we have some new council members you mentioned, just to explain, we have Jamestown-specific cars that work out of our Jamestown office. We have one on each squad. We actually have Deputy Chapel here. He's one of our assigned Jamestown cars. So they, you have 24-hour coverage with that. We do have a total of six officers working on any given shift, sergeant, master corporal, and then zone cars. One specifically for Jamestown and then others assigned to the other zones between the Forsyth County line up around Sandy Ridge Road, that area, all the way down to Pleasant Garden, 421, the Randolph County line. So we kind of have that whole chunk of the county to cover. Our stats for Jamestown this year, we're looking very similar to last year, actually. Overall, it seems like our highest call volume month was May. I'm assuming that's going to be weather related. We had 106 calls in Jamestown during that month. And our lowest months were October and November. So we had a total of 918 calls in Jamestown in 2023. We have a breakdown of what those calls were. One of the most significant calls was burglar alarms. Obviously, whenever your burglar alarm goes off, whether it's a false alarm, real alarm, those accounted for a significant amount of those calls. We had 53 check welfare, family assistance, somebody calls for us to check on a loved one they can't get in contact with, something of that nature. We had 50 disorderly subject or crowds, 21 domestic disputes. We did have 32 larcenies. That's going to be larceny shoplifting, people taking from our stores. And we had 51 law assistance calls. It's just kind of a catch-all type category for us. And we had about 71 suspicious activity calls in the area. So that's kind of a breakdown of our Jamestown stats. It is broken down further if you guys want to look into that. But those were kind of the highlights that I saw in there are our major call volume. You want to go to the second, we have a breakdown comparison from 2022 to 2023 for all of our calls. And like I said, everything seemed pretty similar to last year, which is good. It means we didn't go up in any of our crimes. And that's something that we want to see. The only significant increase we saw was with larceny shopliftings. And I think that probably has something to do with the growth in the area. It is something that we are working on and actively trying to do that. But the good thing is we do have a good clearance rate on those for apprehending those shoplifters. So that's the good in and all. Our violent crime was the same, as I say. And I pulled some, just some significant stuff that some of our Jamestown cars have done. Our Jamestown guys usually are newer officers and so a lot of times they try to be proactive. And they're fortunate to be able to catch stuff coming between Greensboro and High Point. So we had a couple of firearm by felon charges, carrying concealed weapon charges. We did get a possession with intent to sell and deliver, maintaining a vehicle felony possession of marijuana with 111 grams of marijuana and other narcotic-related charges on a traffic stop in Jamestown. And we actually had, if you recall, there was a vandalism of one of the church food boxes during one shift. That we actually identified the juveniles from Ragsdale High School and we were able to divert them and get some reparations in that. able to divert them and get some reparations in that.
That's good. Excellent.
Yes. Um, does anybody have any questions about us or Jamestown cars or anything?
I have a question that I guess I could have asked the Fire Department or you all and maybe it's for the more global county or maybe even High Point. With the bypass, do, uh, do you know if there's been an increase in motor vehicle accidents? The reason I ask is just anecdotally, I see cars running the red lights all the time on the bypass at 55 miles an hour or faster, so.
Yes, absolutely. I know we actually had a wreck up there recently. Um, it was a fatality wreck.
Oh, no.
So, um, if you're talk, but that's not that bypass. We're talking, you're talking about Jamestown Parkway bypass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, this was actually up on 85.
Oh, okay.
Right there at Riverdale.
Oh, yeah, Riverdale.
Yes. Um, so I don't know, we, a lot of times we'll respond in assistance with, um, but Highway Patrol handles most of the accidents, so I'm not sure the stats on that.
I was just curious.
But I, I am sure being the type of highway that it is, there probably is a, an increase in that with people running the red lights.
You might not have this, but, but we usually get what the response time is for a call? And if you don't, you can get that back to us?
I don't, but I do know we get those on a, um, bi-monthly basis. And looking at our comparisons, uh, just overall in District 3, our response times were about the same. I think overall, we average between, between 10 and 12 minutes. Um, Jamestown is gonna be a lot lower than that. I don't have anything Jamestown-specific.
Oh.
But a lot of times, like I said, our office is here in Jamestown and so we respond all the way down to Pleasant Garden.
Yeah.
On the southern part of Pleasant Garden, so some of that is gonna factor into that as well. But if you guys would like that, I can try to get that specific, send it to you.
I'd be interested if you, if you can get.
Yes.
For Jamestown, what it would be, yeah.
So it looks like it's pretty much the same, pretty consistent from last year, except, like you say, the shoplifting charge.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you keeping us safe.
Well, thank you.
And I, I pray that you stay safe, too.
Thank you very much. And if there's anything that y'all need, uh, you know where to find us? And we'll be seeing y'all around.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Marcy, do you have a golf report for us?
Ooh, I just jerked it down. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, so it was a pretty typical, uh, fourth quarter at the golf course. The only thing different was, uh, we had nine holes closed for, when they were working on the, the dam to repair that. So that took right at six weeks. But despite that, um, the golf rounds were still up 5% for that quarter compared to 2022. So, yeah, it was, it was good. Um, the driving range usage, you know, if you'll remember, we redid that, the driving range tee, and that reopened in October of '22. But, um, from the quarter 2022, we were up this past quarter by 50%. So the driving range is still a very popular place, um, to, to come and hit range balls. So that's good for us. Um, we did, we had five outings in the last quarter, mainly in October, because that's when a lot of people do their fundraisers. And we did, we did have five, uh, room rentals in, over the quarter. And we are happy to, I'm happy to say that we're gonna be able to start taking room rentals again, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. We found that out, uh, just this week, so, um... And then, you know, the other thing, um, if you'll remember, we implemented a, um, a credit card policy, um, in November to reserve tee times. And that has, that has gone really, really well. It was a slight adjustment for, you know, the staff to start taking a credit card, but it has definitely served its purpose and made the golfers, you know, more accountable and, you know, to manage their tee time, not just make it and then not show. Um, it's definitely making them, you know, think, well, if I'm not gonna use it, then I'm gonna cancel it. So that, that has really worked well.
Good.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have much, you know, it's pretty much winter, um, at the golf course, but we're excited for this year and it being the 50th anniversary of the golf course, um, we're gonna have some, some good things coming.
Yeah.
So we're looking forward to that. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
None for me, no.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks, Marcy. Thank you. You're welcome.
Faith, you're up with the inter-local agreement with Guilford County.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Guilford County provides the tax collection for the town and we have received an amended, um, agreement extending the inter-local agreement on the tax collection. Currently, the rate, the tax collection rate is set at, um, .62%. But with this amended agreement, it will increase to .75%, which is a 13% increase from what we have been pla- uh, what we have been paying. But staff does recommend that council approve the amended inter-local agreement with Guilford County and to authorize the manager and finance director to execute all documents. Is there any questions?
And it's been many years since they had an increase, correct?
It has. It's been several years. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So this would be good through 2029? And I guess Beth, you've looked over it.
Yes, ma'am. 2016 is when it started.
Okay.
It's been at .62 for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's a great service, I know. Yeah, I can't imagine not having them do that for us.
Any questions for Faith?
No.
Do you have a motion?
Well, I'd make a motion to allow the town manager, the town clerk, finance director, and town attorney to sign and authorize the amended inter-local agreement.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. And Matthew, do you have the manager's report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple of, of our major projects that are currently are underway and I'm happy to say are completed. Uh, the maintenance building received our certificate of occupancy. The staff have been moving into the building over the last, um, few weeks or so. Uh, this will be the last update on the project and that concludes the Council's strategic plan goal, number 5.6. And the same for our golf course bathrooms. Happy to say that they, final inspections have been completed and we have received our CO for those. They are open for public use and I believe Marcy has said that they've gotten rave reviews. As many rave reviews as a bathroom can get. Uh, which also completes, uh, Council's strategic plan goal 5.10. Loose leaf collection, which began on Monday, October 23rd, uh, will be concluding on February the 23rd. That's a Friday. We do ask folks to have the leaves out by the 21st so that we can make sure that we make full, complete rounds through town and make sure everything is cleaned up by the 23rd. After the 23rd, uh, folks can either use the optional bins, they can purchase a bin from the town for loose leaf collection, or they can use, um, the heavy-duty, uh, craft paper bag-type, um, containers that you can get at any hardware store. Early voting, uh, will begin for the March 5th primary in this room, uh, on the 15th. As you can see, there's a couple of things in here for preparing for that. Uh, the town doesn't control the voting precincts and information on voting can be obtained through the Guilford County Board of Elections. I did put the link in there, but you can just, uh, go on there and they have all the information about when the sites are open and that's, that type of stuff. I wanted to extend congratulations to our Planning Director, Anna Haverluck, who has secured our 16th consecutive Tree City USA designation. So thanks very much to Anna for her work on that. Elizabeth Griesen would like me to remind everybody that the litter sweep, uh, will be conducted on April the 20th. And if you have questions or you'd like to participate in that, you can simply reach out to Elizabeth here at Town Hall and she'd be happy to work with you on that. Uh, I did wanna say a couple of thank yous here. Thank you to both Lieutenant Cox and Chief Carson. And as members of the councils did, uh, say, uh, we were happy to attend the awards banquet for the Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department. Uh, it's a great opportunity to see the dedication that those folks bring to our community. It, it's really impressive what they, uh, what they're doing to save lives. Uh, and I wanna extend a very, uh, big thank you to Nancy. Nancy has been instrumental in keeping us on track the last, uh, few months as Katie's been on maternity leave. Uh, so we really wanted to thank you very much for all that you've done to help us. Are there any questions for me?
I always, uh, since we had gotten some of these, uh, reports, it made me think, um, to get the Guilford County Animal Control Report. We always have to call them, but, I mean, they'll have to come do a presentation, but give us a quarterly report of the activity in Jamestown.
We were contacted by the, um, animal shelter and so I'll, I'll, I've, I've been in emails with them, I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do we have any committee reports?
Yes, I can start with Planning Board if you'd like.
Thank you.
Uh, Planning Board, uh, met last evening, February the 12th. Um, Ed Stafford was elected Chair of the Planning Board and, uh, Russ Walker was elected Vice Chair. Uh, Hannah, Anna Haverluck reviewed the Planning Board general duties and the zoning guidelines for everyone, so, um, that's helpful for the new members. The 2024 Planning Board, uh, meeting schedule is in place with just one adjustment date, uh, from November 11th, that which was changed to November the 4th. And last, that schedule should also be updated on the town's website for everyone. That's it for the Planning Board. Thank you.
Martha, did you have any?
No.
I, um, well, unfortunately, the, um, Guilford County School Board, um, their meeting days and times are the exact same days and times as our meeting. Uh, but luckily, because of, um, this month's change in our schedule, I'll be able to attend this month's, um, uh, School Board meeting. But I did, uh, watch the School Board meeting that they held in January and I did wanna mention that Gary Gonzalez of Jamestown Middle School, um, was named Employee of the Month for Guilford County Schools. He's a student success coordinator there, so that was lovely that, and he's worked for Jamestown Middle School for, I believe it was 23 years, so that was nice to have him recognized. Um, and then I have reached out to, um, the principal of Jamestown Middle School, be- mostly because my kids go there, so that's the easy, easiest one for me to start with. Um, and I'm meeting with him on Thursday, um, to just talk about any, you know, community engagement projects we can assist with, or they might want to participate, maybe in the litter sweep and those kinds of things, and see how we can, um, collaborate in that way. And I've also reached out to the, um, two, two School Board members who represent schools within the Jamestown town limits and, um, hopefully we'll hear from them soon and hopefully meet, meet them personally next week, so.
Oh, great.
Nice. Thank you, Sarah. Has anyone signed up for public comment period, Nancy?
Uh, no.
Council, we have any other business to attend to? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you all.